Colonel Joseph Conger, I saw him Saturday.
Yeah, good afternoon, Chairperson. Long time no see.
That's right. Good to see you. We are, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. So. For.
Bill 722.
And that's for acceptance of a grant from the federal government. It is for reducing injury and death of missing individuals with dementia and developmental disabilities. The grant, the total grant award is one hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. It's a three-year operational period and is from the US Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance. This would allow us to support our search and rescue efforts in a proactive way where we, we could provide up to two hundred individuals in the county who are, who suffer with either dementia or developmental disability, things like Alzheimer's or autism, where they are likely to walk away from their caregivers. We could provide up to two hundred of them with a bracelet that would have a tracking device. They would voluntarily participate in the program. And we would have tracking, uh, tracking sensors for each of our ten precincts so that we can locate these folks much more quickly and efficiently before anything bad could happen to them ideally.
I like a good idea. Any questions or comments from the members?
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, that's an awesome. Mr. Congress, it's good to see you there. Haven't seen you in hiding in a public safety building, have you?
I have. They don't really let me out, but I do do webex from time to time.
Okay, good. No, I think this is an excellent program because I do read from time to time where folks just wander off. Especially, you know, they have caregivers, but it only takes a minute or two for them to get out the door and, and to get away. So I think this is a really good program.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Bevins. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you. We'll move on to page, uh, thank you, Colonel. We'll move on to page six with Colonel Layback.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairperson. Good afternoon, Council. Um, this is a request for contract for one hundred and thirty thousand, one fifty-seven twenty-two with Bodie. It did go out to bid. They're the only ones that responded. This is for STR mixed software validation. STR software is in, is for interpretation of complex data settings or profiles. The scope of the service under the contract is to purchase services from the qualified contractor to perform software validations, including teach back for up to seven DNA laboratory personnel to cover all aspects of validation, results and analysis involved in the validation study. This covers multiple validation studies, laboratory time, collecting and evaluation of value of validation data, teach back training of lab personnel, and completion of the validation summaries and written standards, operating procedures. The validations must meet guidelines established under the Scientific Working Group on DNA Analysis Methods. For the validation of probabilistic genotyping systems and the validation documentation shall be in accordance with the FBI's QAS for forensic testing laboratories. Eleven validation plan requirements are listed in solicitation. The validation will be conducted in Baltimore County Police Department's forensic service lab. Our copies must be provided of all data summaries, charts, tablets, worksheets. Basically, this is critical in the nature of DNA. Uh, DNA validation is critical. Um, and that's what the software will be for. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the members? There are none. Thank you very much, Colonel Layback.
You have a good day.
You too. Move on to page nine. Shendel.
Good evening, Councilmen and members of council. It's good to see you this evening. The administration is requesting approval of an amendment to a contract with Arcs System, Inc. to continue to provide far alarm, fire alarm installation, repairs, parts inspections, and preventive maintenance to a variety of county-owned facilities. The proposed amendment increased the maximum compensation by two hundred and thirty thousand from four hundred and twenty thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand for the entire five-year and four-month term of the contract. The contract commenced on January first of two thousand and eighteen. The contractor under this actual contract provides all necessary labors, material, tools, equipment, supervision, and related incidentals required to test, inspect, and maintain, repair, and upgrade our fire alarm system. The request for this increase is because when we originally bid this, we had twenty ninety-one buildings that had fire alarm systems. We now have a hundred and four buildings that are required to have regular testing and repair in them. And in addition to that, obviously, the cost of repairs have increased. This was competitively bid back in two thousand and eighteen as we utilized the Baltimore County Public Schools contract at that time, and there is currently a fourteen percent MBE on this current contract. That is the end of my testimony. If you have any questions, feel free, and I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions or comments from the members? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Shendel.
Thank you, everyone.
Sure. We'll move on to Mr. Tom Flag, page twelve.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Honorable members of council. Administration is requesting approval of a contract with Gannett Fleming, Inc. Provide on-call water tank and reservoir inspection design services for the county-owned water storage facilities located within the Baltimore Metropolitan Water System. These services are needed for public health and safety of our community to ensure the integrity of our water storage facilities, including eighteen elevated water tanks and six water reservoirs located within that system. These services will include inspection and evaluation of existing water tanks and reservoirs, design of structural repairs, writing of necessary specifications, and preparations of drawings and other related services as needed. This contract commences upon council approval and will continue for four years with an additional two, two-year option to renew. Contract does not specify maximum compensation for the initial four-term. Four-year term, however, the max compensation may not exceed one point five million dollars for the entire eight years a term of the contract, including the renewal period. Uh, this contract was competitively bid and selection of the consultant was based on best qualified, best, uh, offer selected through our professional services selection committee held on July twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, and this contract did, does have an MBE requirement of twenty percent. And that concludes my testimony. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the members? Well, let's move right along to page sixteen. Was it Rummel, Klepper, and Call?
Yes, the, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the administration is requesting approval of a contract with Rummel Klepper and Call LLP to provide on-call potable water pipeline design services for tier-two projects. That's projects exceeding three hundred thousand. These services are needed for the public health and safety of the community to ensure our public water system for the Baltimore Metropolitan Water System. Services will include pipeline design, transits, construction, design permitting, environmental surveys and studies, preparation of soil erosion and sediment control, and reforestation, landscape plans, and construction phase services. This contract will commence upon council approval and continue for four years with two two-year option to renew. Contract provides, uh, the agreement shall remain in effect until until the earlier of the date upon which the required services are completed or the agreement is terminated. Contract does not specify maximum compensation, however, there is a not to exceed a four million for the entire eight-year term, including the renewal periods. This contract was selected on best qualified competitive process, uh, selected through our professional services selection committee held on July twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-one, and this contract has a twenty percent MBE WB goal.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to disclose to the members that my wife works for this firm, and I will recuse myself from any discussion or vote on this particular issue.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Mr. Flag. We'll move on to Bill nine dash twenty-two, Councilwoman Bevins.
I'm up. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I, I know when I circulated this bill, it must have looked very familiar to many of the members because this is not, uh, the first time something like this has been presented. It's just in a different area. Generally, a CT district overlay may be applied only to a primary shopping areas within town centers on land zone business local and business roadside and or manufacturing light. The primary shopping area of these town centers should contain a high incidence of pedestrian-oriented retail use, including major businesses generators such department stores, and include certain auxiliaries such as offices. Certain planned shopping centers having such characteristics may hold, may lie wholly or partially within a CT district. Now, for this, uh, these special regulations for the overlay district set forth in the Baltimore County zoning regulations such as commercial community districts, there's a separate CT district section for each zone in which the district may be applied. Currently, there are three such sections, uh, section two, three, two B for BL and section two, three, five for, yeah, for the BM zone and two, three, eight B for the BR zone. While all these sections prohibit apartments on first story of a building, the council has amended two, three, five B to permit such apartments in certain areas. Now, I know this has been done for the Hunt Valley town name area and has also been done in the Omies Mills Town Center subarea, and I would like it now to take place in the White Marsh area. Um, the land has already been acquired. They would be, um, raising the building, uh, that's already there. And of course, this would be to allow apartments on the first floor instead of, um, retail. And, uh, after December, when this is no longer, this area will no longer be in my district, it will then fall into David Marks District, and I believe that Councilman Marks has already had a meeting about this as well. And if he would like to make any comments, um, surely I welcome them. We all know the, the White Marsh Mall isn't as vibrant as it once was. And, um, they've been trying to do a lot of different things in the area to help that, and we think this may be one, uh, to actually have some, um, multi-housing right there, um, almost but it almost up to the mall. Um, so I think it'll be another just, um, different kind of housing stock, uh, for people to live in in the area. And it would be good for people to work at the mall and live close to the mall, and we own, uh, you know, that the, um, parking ride is right there across the street. Uh, so it'd be very good also for people that, you know, may live downtown or out of the area, but they're right next, uh, to mass transit there. Uh, so I hope that, um, I can garner your support, uh, for Bill nine twenty-two. And, um, Council Marks, if you'd like to say anything, um, I welcome that.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Councilwoman Bevins. Um, I did have the opportunity to meet with the representatives from, uh, White Marsh Mall. This is a parcel that is, um, owned separately for the rest of the mall. I agree with you, Councilwoman. Uh, you know, White Marsh Mall is over forty years old. I can remember when it was being built. I was very young. And, uh, in my opinion, White Marsh Mall needs a, a transformation. We've seen the success with other areas, including Hunt Valley, uh, that had become more of a destination with a residential component. Um, I think as we reimagine White Marsh Mall, what it could become, giving the owner this sort of flexibility is very helpful. Uh, I'm also pleased that the, um, the owner recognizes the importance of, um, of targeting this to those without school-aged children. And they've made some adjustments. Um, that's important. But I agree, I agree with you, Councilwoman. I mean, the mall, it really needs a reimagining. And, um, it's definitely something that's long overdue. So thank you very much.
And, and I thank you for mentioning of, uh, school-aged children because I did look at the amount of, um, three-bedroom apartments in this project, and I know that when there's three apartments, there's more children. And I was worried about, um, our school seats, of course. Uh, so I did negotiate with them to, um, decrease, uh, the number of three-bedroom apartments that they were having. So, um, I was, I appreciate them working with me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very much, Councilman Bevins, Councilwoman Bevins, and Councilman Marks. Any questions or comments from the members?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Crandall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Councilwoman, uh, this, you may have said this in, um, your description of the bill, but forgive me if I, if I missed it. But this pertains to the White Marsh District only, correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like me to go with a, uh, perimeter so that I will.
That's up to you, but I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, don't worry. I know what you're thinking about immediately. Yeah.
And I did, yeah, I was just wondering if this, uh, I wanted to make sure this, this was, uh, a local bill and not a county-wide bill.
Got you. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Any questions or comments from the members? We'll move on to, uh, well, we have, uh, page twenty. Councilman Catch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this particular resolution, uh, would establish a PUD in what I call the Lovedon Industrial Park. Is that the one we're on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The Heights of Hunt Valley.
You got it. Um, a few years ago, this council supported me in an effort to allow an assisted living facility, uh, north of the Lovedon Industrial Park. And, um, the land in question is, uh, if you know, uh, like where the Kelly Insurance Agency is in Lovedon, this property is near that, and it's property whose owner has not been able to sell it, has not been able to, uh, have, have any interest in the owner building a building and renting it out. I mean, it's just a, uh, it's become a white elephant. And the reason that it's become a, a white elephant is the fact that York Road from Brock, from Hunt Valley up to Lovedon is a windy, it's just a windy road. And, uh, it, uh, it is the part of York Road that desperately needs, uh, attention, and it needs to be, uh, upgraded for its use today. And on top of it, uh, the, the UPS is there, so there's a lot of truck traffic that goes back and forth. Anyhow, since I had, uh, allowed assisted living in north of this industrial park, the owners of this property, well, I, I perspective buyer of the property came to me and basically asked me if I would consider doing the same thing for them and putting in a PUD, uh, on that area, uh, a age-restricted community. When, uh, you know, I said, I definitely I would entertain it. So, uh, they came to me and had a very ambitious plan of a senior-only development with an assisted living facility, condominiums for seniors, and townhouses, which they call villas. I don't know why they call it villas, but I think of villas, I think of individual houses. But anyhow. So I immediately, uh, got heads of the communities in the surrounded area, surrounding area to get involved in this. And, uh, to make a long story short, the, uh, the, what, what has happened is the current owners of the property and prospective buyers have been, um, suggesting other things that can go there besides townhouses, assisted living, et cetera, saying that the possibility of these other things, like a truck facility, et cetera, uh, could happen. And, uh, what really has gone on, the neighboring property owners have been frightened into supporting, uh, development of this property, uh, as residents. And, uh, so, um, what I've agreed to do, uh, is to put in the PUD. The PUD in front of you, I attempted to compromise the best I could. What it would allow, I explained to you what the original, uh, proposal was, what the new proposal is that up to fifty-two townhouses or villas and an assisted living facility to house a hundred seventy people of up to four stories positioned on the land so that the assisted living facility, um, won't, uh, stick out like a sore thumb because the buildings in that industrial park are three, uh, three stories tall. So I have it, have them putting it on part of the property that if you look up at it, you won't see that it's four stories tall. Now, this is a very controversial issue. And, uh, after numerous meetings, I just said to the people that I would put in a, uh, PUD that I would attempt to compromise everything that I had heard, and what you see is the compromise. Now, I'd say one of the very positive parts of this PUD is that the townhouses and the assisted living building, uh, would need to have a silver lead designation. That means, uh, according to, uh, what I understand is housing for the first time in Baltimore County that would be, uh, green. And, uh, so that, that's one of the things that I think make this, uh, suggestion or this proposal good. So I'm really interested in hearing what members of the council have to say about this, what, and most importantly, what constituents, because this is yesterday was the first day that they've seen my proposed compromise. It just went out yesterday. And, uh, you know, I may have to delay consideration, uh, for three weeks uh, in order to get all the comments in and in order to make changes that hopefully will satisfy all of the participants. Uh, but this, this has not, uh, been a, uh, one of the best situations that I've been in. It's been very difficult. You got to understand when people purchase townhouses for a half million dollars and feel as if their investment is going to be threatened in the future by the possibility of an Amazon-like facility with the trucks running back and forth when there's already a UPS facility where the trucks are, are running back and forth. It's very disruptive and the concern is that, uh, first of all, it's going to make their lives, uh, very challenging, plus diminish the value of their homes. Now, the reason real that it's a senior living facility is the schools in the area cannot, uh, they're already at capacity. So the schools won't be a problem. And secondly, it's, it's why I hope that a senior-only facility won't produce the number of the amount of traffic that, uh, non-age-restricted communities would, uh, generate. So I know this presentation, you know, it, it, uh, you know, I wish I could come to you with something that has been agreed to by all the parties. But, uh, there was a deadline involved. It, it's just been a very pressurized situation, and I, I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Uh, any questions or comments from the members?
Just one question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Batoke.
Councilman Catch, is there any relationship between, uh, the, um, assisted living and the townhouse residence? So is it or are they just totally separate from one another? So it's not, uh, seniors may, when they need more, um, assistance in their daily lives can, uh, move into the assisted living?
There is no, there is no relationship between the two. When, uh, this was first, uh, proposed to me, I thought that there was going to be, but there is no relationship whatsoever. So if you buy one of these townhouses, there is no guarantee that should the day come where you need assisted living, that you would be automatically accepted in the assisted living facility.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from anyone? I know we have a speaker, at least one speaker.
Good. I wish there was more than one.
You know, stay tuned. One today, and maybe we'll get some more later.
Well, I'm gonna, I, I'm sure they're all emailing me now, and, and I'm sure there's going to be future meetings. And, uh, hopefully there'll be a, uh, resolution that everyone can be happy with. So I'm, I'm not, you know, this, this, this whole issue goes back to two thousand and sixteen and CZMP, two thou, two thousand and twenty CZMP. And in all honesty, I would like thinking of the future to keep this property zoned the way it is today because I think that we need areas for job creation. And I think that was the original intent when the Hunt, when the Sparks or, or Lovedon Industrial Park was created. And, uh, because of York Road, because of other situations, it has not, you know, it suddenly stopped being a desirable place. Not to say that in the future it won't become a desirable place. So, it, it's a real dilemma.
Well, Councilman Catch, uh, I'm sure the citizens as well as myself certainly appreciate your hard work and dedication in trying to come to some resolution. And, um, you realize it's not easy because all of us on this call, every council member has been there and continue to do it day in and day out. You know, sometimes people just don't appreciate the hard work that goes into this job, but you know, we certainly, uh, wish you well with it. And thanks for your hard work.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Ms. Bel Castro? You're welcome. Ms. Bel Castro, the speaker, please.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our speaker for this afternoon is Sean Morrell. I hope I'm pronouncing that properly. Mr. Morrell?
Yes, hi, I'm Sean Morrell. I am a homeowner at the Hunt Valley Overlook Town, actually Town Homes, and first of all, I appreciate Councilman Catch for you and your hard work, and I, we've been, my community has been involved from the very beginning to make sure that we state our feelings about the possibility of a distribution center going in. There has been quite a bit of talk about what would work and what wouldn't work, and I mean, the, the, the thing that I've kind of stuck out to me that might be a benefit, and again, I'm not a, I, I don't know, I, I don't know what would be the height restrictions or anything like that. I, I just, when the layout of the community with the villas was something that just kind of caught my attention of looking nice, it seemed like there were, there were talks about paths and, you know, walkways and things like that, that our community could perhaps share in, that was being placed in, in the villas. And I just wanted to just mention that we're certainly not interested in a distribution facility going in if we can, if we can help with that. The York Road is very busy. In fact, not more than a month ago, I, that, there's a one-lane bridge that is right before Broadmead, and I literally had to come to a stop because there's no sidewalk that would let the three people that was crossing that bridge walk into or over the bridge. And I mean, there's, there's constantly people walking on that road up through there, and my concern was, is that with more facilities like distribution centers, they're more concerned that I would, you know, be for the, 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 the person walking on the road, if not the driver. So that's, that's pretty much all that I have to say, and that's it.
I, thank, thank you very much for your, your input. It's much appreciated, and I can assure you I will continue to work with your community and everyone in the area that has a concern. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions or comments from anyone? Okay, I'm going to, that said, I'm going to make a motion that we go into closed session so that we may discuss some items with our attorneys. And can someone second the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? All in favor of, Mr. Secretary, do you have to call a roll, or can I just go all in favor?
I'd be happy to call the roll just to make it official. I think that's, that's a better, a good way to do it.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Crandall?
Aye.
Mrs. Bevins?
Aye.
Mr. Marks?
Aye.
Mr. Petoka?
Aye.
Mr. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Catch?
Mr. Chair, this has nothing to do with the issue we just spoke about, right?
Absolutely correct. Nothing to do with that.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Guys have it, and we thank everyone for attending, and we'll move to closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.